Good evening, welcome to this study session of the Albion City Council, Thursday, December 14th, 2017. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask you to place it on silent. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a roll call. Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Baller?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown? Here. Public comments: Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, and please state your name and address as well. Is there any public comment this evening?
If I can get through this. Nidia Wolf, 409 Irwin Avenue. I am here representing the tri-chairs of the Community Leadership and Engagement Council. The other two are Dr. Harry Bonner and Ellen Hansen, and the third is myself. We are in favor of the Advancing Albion Action Plan. As the former Director of the Downtown Development Authority, I can tell you that I have firsthand knowledge of the deterioration of many of downtown buildings, and the plan to bring them up to code, to bring them into use again, is a positive one, and I wanted to mention that we are in support of this Advancing Albion Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Slater, 517 East Michigan Avenue, addressing the Albion Action Plan. Just want to briefly point out on page seven, the reference to 64 percent of the population being empty nesters and retirees. Just want to let you know that we have a small committee that has convened three times, people my age and such, who love Albion, who may be thinking of some time in the future where we might want to have a different style of residence, and would like to see such happening here. So we have met, we're just at the very beginning discussing various kinds of opportunities. Just want to let you know that that's happening.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Worley, 420 Allen Place. As President and CEO of the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce, we are excited for the Advancing Albion Plan. We are in favor of any plan that's going to help revitalize the downtown area and get those storefronts open for business, and the adjoining apartments upstairs on those buildings to make Albion a great place to come work and live. So the Chamber is giving their support to this plan, and we look forward to working with the EDC to get this plan in action.
Is there any?
I'm Nels Christensen. I live down the street, at 915 South Superior Street. I also wanted to just say a few things about ARC. And I thought I would begin by just reading a few things that ARC believes in. ARC wants to promote economic growth, employment, and development in Albion. ARC wants to unite all parties interested in the redevelopment of downtown Albion. It wants to initiate applications for federal and state financial support, and it wants to use all effective means to bring in new construction and business that will provide jobs in Albion. I need to read that, just to say that I think that I want those things too. I know all you all want those things too. I know everyone in this room wants those things too, and just about anybody on the street in Albion wants those things too. But I will also say about ARC, things that I like about it, that it's made up of folks who love Albion. It's made up of folks who are willing to do work for Albion. It's one thing to love Albion, it's one thing to say you love Albion, it's another thing like to do the work, which I really, really value. It's made up of folks who are willing to spend their own money in Albion and on Albion, and it's made up of folks who are willing to work with anybody else who wants those things too. And I love all those things about ARC. And I don't need to tell you all how to serve Albion, because you are all serving Albion. That's why you're up there, and I appreciate that. You give your time and money and energy to serving Albion. So I'm not here to tell you how to do that, because you're already doing it, and I'm certainly not here to tell you that I think you should do more. That's not what I'm here to say. But I am here to say that I hope and I expect that you just don't make it harder for ARC to do its work. It's hard enough, as you all know, to do the good work in Albion without anybody making it harder. So that's all I'm here to say, is I would hope that you would not make it any harder for a group like ARC to do its good work in Albion. Thanks.
Is there any further public comment this evening on the agenda?
Good evening, Council. Bob Dunkland, 70700th Boulevard. I stand before you tonight to greet you. As I look at your agenda items tonight, and the City Manager, Sarah, I just ask that you be fair, that you negotiate with an open mind. Because as I look back, I went back and did some research on each one of you when you first took office, and some of the things that you said. Councilwoman Barnes, you stated, what was your vision of Albion? Working to make Albion a better community. Councilwoman Sonia Powell, you stated, you wanted to see Albion become a growing, enviable Councilwoman Alala, you stated, you want to see unity in the city. Councilwoman Lynn Reed, you stated, you want to see us prosper and grow, come together and support each other. And if I remember correctly, you had a couple of strippers in there also. Councilwoman Spicer, you stated, see this city grow and proper ladder in business. Councilwoman French, you stated, community to accept new support and support business and education initiatives. I ask that you all think about those things as we think about this art. I think all of those things that you said kind of tie into what art is trying to do for this community. So we ask that you, please, as you do the negotiation and as you think about the art, please consider what you said, once you took that seat back in the first year. Thank you.
Herman McCall, 1206 Maple Street. I currently serve as the Chair of the EDC until February, so I thought I would come in and just share just a few words, more so than a long statement. Innovation, creativity, collaboration, success, those are the things that we should be looking for in this community. And so if there are opportunities to do that, we should look for those things. And as others look into Albion in terms of supporting the efforts that we do, they're looking for, can we collaborate? Can we come together to maximize our resources and attract resources? So I would hope that as our council and our elected officials of the city, you will look for those opportunities to continue to move things positively forward. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move forward to the items for this evening, items for individual discussion. We'll begin with A, Economic Development, Public-P private Partnerships. One, which is ARC, Albion Reinvestment Corporation and the Economic Development Corporation Relationship. So is Amy?
I wasn't sure if it was one or two. So before I get started on the presentation that is, you've each been provided a copy of, I do want to say one good thing that happened today. We had the job fair, and we ended up, even on a snowy day, we ended up with about a 90 percent return. So we expected about 105 people that completed the prep fair and got their golden ticket to move on to the job fair, and we actually had about 95, 96. And they're to get all the numbers and the demographics and everything tomorrow. We'll be issuing something, but... Ryan was a big part of that, and Danielle from my office, you all know Danielle. So it took a real community effort to make that happen, and we heard wonderful comments. So hopefully we'll get some good job opportunities out of that. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Amy DePraise, the President of EDC, and I also act as the Executive Director of ARC. Today, and if I can remember how to use this, yeah. I want to talk to you a little bit about who ARC is before we go into the Advancing Albion Plan and some of the other elements. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It's a charitable organization that was founded in 2015 specifically to receive and administer funds and property to conduct, I'm sorry, I can't see that far away from me, to combat community deterioration in the downtown business district and the surrounding areas. ARC was modeled after some other communities that had done something similar. One of those is the Uptown Development in Flint, which works with Mott Foundation. ARC is, as we've already heard from one of the comments, ARC will promote economic growth, employment, and development in the community. They're aimed to unite the partners, advocate and solve problems, seek grant and other charitable funds, and then really put every effort to revitalize and sustain the downtown business district. Included in the link on your screen and in your packet is an online directory for all nonprofit organizations, and ARC is listed, that's actually the link right to their site. We're working right now with Albion College and some students to put together a, hopefully a student program, to put together the social media presence for ARC. All funds that ARC get really needs to go back into the community for the job that they've got to do. So anytime we can maximize using resources that are available to us, that needs to happen. So ARC has, I've got four board members right now, and they are Dr. William Dobbins, you all know him, he's the President of ARC. You've seen him come before you recently for his real estate division, ACE Investments, in the Peabody Project. Just to remind you, that's a $1.7 million investment that's happening in the downtown that leveraged $800,000 in federal funds through the state of Michigan, called Community Development Black Grant Funds. The VP of the Board is Sam Shaheen. You know his name quite well in this community. He's been very much involved with the hotel and with the Luddington Center, and he's pretty much spearheaded some of the initial development that's happened. He's got 20 years of urban redevelopment experience, and he's also received the Governor's Award for his philanthropic work. The other two board members, Secretary is Jeff Ott. Jeff is a partner with Warner, Narcros, and Judd. He's got over 30 years of experience in capital raising, business startups, and early-round financing. And then the newest member joined earlier this year, and that's Mike McFarland. A lot of people know him as Chef Mike. He's the VP of Food and Beverage at Firekeepers Casino. He was the first one to convince the tribe to do an off-reservation or off-casino property investment, and that's the Battle Creek Fire Hub. If you're not familiar with that, it's quite a creation. It's a restaurant that the casino operates, and the proceeds or the profits that come out of that get reinvested into the community. So he is interested in doing something similar for Albion. So there's key players that have, but all of them have ties to the community in one way or another, or are very much involved in community development. So the Advancing Albion Action Plan really is a community plan. It's got to be an investment strategy. It's a call to action. The plan is, will be used to fundraise and seek grant fundings and foundation dollars. It's a shared vision that focuses on the real estate development, housing, retail, commercial, and cultural arts, and it defines what the ongoing success of Albion needs So why wasn't the actual plan really needed? Why did ARC need it? That's simple. There's 40 percent of downtown buildings that are vacant and blighted, and if you walk on the backside of those, it doesn't take you long to realize bricks are falling and they're in major, major need of repair. If we go another five years, 10 years, they're probably going to be past the ability to repair, and they'll have to be demoed. And if you looked at the front of those structures, they're beautiful, they shouldn't be demoed. So, and there's very, today there's very few residential options in the downtown, though a lot of data has shown us in studies that if you bring residential to the downtown, it brings commercial and services that improves everybody's quality of life in the community. Reduced property tax has caused infrastructure issues in the city, so Albion is simply in a spot where they have to reinvent, diversify, and stabilize its post-industrial economy to meet what's going to happen in the 21st century. There's so many opportunities for Albion. The first one I want to talk to is about Albion College. A strong community benefits the college and vice versa. Albion College has been one of the early investors in downtown, reducing some of the risk for other developers to come onboard, and they've demonstrated their commitment to the community through their ongoing investment in the downtown and in other areas. Albion's a small community. Today's population likes to walk to work, like to bike. We've invested a lot of money in trails and non-motor infrastructure that can attract that population that doesn't want to use a car every single day. And then we've got Superior Street. Our downtown is a commercial historic district, and it's got a brand-new brick street and gorgeous, gorgeous structures. Those are things you can't, you can't develop, you have to redevelop. So you've got that gem. And then location of Albion is second to none. You're within easy, easy commute of major population cores, and you're within about a two-hour drive to most of the large urban cores of the lower peninsula. So it's really, the location is a huge opportunity for business and commercial. So with all of this, there's also been, what I've been calling and referring to as early investors, there's always, there's been some things that have already happened. Now, all these things I'm going to talk about, with the exception of Forks, Forks Associates, that early investment of almost $400,000 in acquisition of properties and planning. The rest of the things on that screen don't have anything to do with ARC. They got to do with the community, their economic drivers. They set the stage for an ARC to come along and further ignite that. So when you keep hearing me say momentum, that's what I'm talking about. We started with momentum back with kids and stuff in the bone, bone one, bone two. Those are economic drivers, but they're not going to turn the community around on their own. Albion Food Hub, the farmer's market, you've seen, I've seen, large, large growth in the farmer's market this year, and we hope next year will be only that much better. Luddington Center, the courtyard. But if come next year, the year after that, that's all the investment that's happened, and the brewing company comes online in spring, hopefully earlier than that, and Peabody probably in the summer, and nothing else happens, we're going to be in trouble. So here's all this momentum, and the opportunity to take things into the next step is right So that takes us to looking at the data. We keep talking about downtown residential. The target market analysis that was done in 2015 said that 82 percent of the new housing developments needed to be multifamily rental units. That's apartments, lofts, and condos and townhouses, not just rental, but people wanted to buy into that. 18 percent of those are those single detached homes, so the typical home that you look at in Albion. But over the next five years, you see the numbers on the screen of the number of people that are looking to relocate within the city, from the surrounding area to the city, and then even from beyond that, 140 people from across the US are looking to relocate to Albion. So the target market analysis really showed that there's support for all types of housing options, not only the very different clusters within that multifamily rental unit, but even rates. We need subsidized, we need rental, we need market rate, and even high-end. Part of putting a plan in place right now is really that the partners are at the table, partners are talking. And so Albion College is the first one I'm going to talk about. Albion College is, really, its primary role is as an educational, you know, top-notch liberal arts college. But they have invested in this community in many ways and will continue to do that. Their part of that is making sure that there's real-life opportunities for students, where they can then lend their faculty and loan their students in a capital, not a capital, human capital, resource, intellectual resource, so we can use that and tap into it. Like I said earlier, what ARC would do for the marketing. But today is about asking the city and the city manager to sign on to the Advancing Albion Action Plan and be a partner with all the other ones listed up there in support the plan to redevelop. To ensure the success of all the plans that are in town, the comprehensive plan, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, all of them that lead up to each and every strategic plan from all these partners, it's going to take coordination and effective use of available resources. We're really going to look to our city and our county government to help with that, and they'll also assist with communication through public forums. The EDC, the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, the Chamber, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, all of those are aimed, and they're already here, they're existing, and they're in a spot where we can then further help and assist ARC meet this mission by attraction of new business opportunities. New Albion Impact Group, NAIG, is an impact investor. Their first project in town is the Albion Brewing Company. I'm not even going to try to say malleable, but I did alright. So I could have. They are an impact-style investment, not a venture-style investment, I was corrected. So venture's more risk, impact is more community-focused. Without a doubt, all the partners are here, they're excited, everyone has got plans to do something to make Albion vibrant and lively and grow that population like you had when the industry was booming. And then further, through the participation of the state through MEDC, will maximize that partnership through grants and loans and assistance. So the plan that I'm asking you to support today is Advancing Albion Action Plan. It's ARC's strategic plan. It's made up of four areas. The first is increasing density and reaching for critical mass in the downtown. The second is revitalization of the connecting neighborhoods, the appeal of the gateways, and then there's a social plan and strategy. The first segment, the increasing density, this segment focuses on the redevelopment of the properties in the downtown. Those are both ARC-owned and other vacant ones that other developers can come and be a part of. ARC will ignite the process, but it's hoped that they're not the only one carrying that load. We want other developers that see that risk being minimized, because there's going to be such a turnaround that they won't have a hard time finding commercial clients, they won't have a hard time filling their residential units. Part of that first component is the Big Albion Plan, and I'm going to talk about that in a couple slides in more detail. But mostly, the detail is still being figured out. That one is a moving target, but it's what I've referred to you in the past as the transformational project. I think everyone understands what a transformational project is, but it's basically from one shot, you go to this, to big and beautiful and everything, you know, practically overnight, speaking in about a two-year timeframe there. And then I talked earlier about Chef Mike and an investment here in Albion. That's also a part of this one. What can we do in Albion that's unique to Albion? And there's a couple different things we're working on. When this plan was written, it was really more of an Albion fire hub, but that might not be the best fit. So we're working through those kinks, but he wants to try to commit the casino and the tribe's support behind all this. And then there's developing a retail strategy for diversification of the downtown, extended hours. You can't have stores closing at 5:00 when you've got residents living down there and you're trying to really capture those people that are working in town, and they're coming out for dinner and pick up something. So it's really extending the hours and creating an environment that keeps people coming back. A major component of the retail mix and diversifying the downtown is going to be a business contest. It's right now named ARC Tank. You recognize that from Shark Tank. But NAIG can team with that, and we can have a competition, and it's not all been ironed out, so I don't have all the details. But we know enough to say that the winners could have lease subsidies, there can be mentorships. So it sets some of these newer entrepreneurs up that have great ideas to be more successful. Now, we don't want them all to be newer entrepreneurs, because we need some of them paying market rates. And we want people that are already drawing a crowd to come to the downtown. So there'll be about a 50/50 percent split between what I'm calling the homegrown entrepreneurs and the known quantities that are already bringing them down. And then the hope is, we'll incubate and we'll grow those newer people, those newer businesses, so in time, they can bear the market rates and still be successful, because that's ultimately where we want them to go. The next segment is revitalization of the connecting corridors, or the connecting neighborhoods, I apologize. The Harrington Neighborhood, I'm sure you've heard about, that's the college's initiative to make sure they've got a community that's porch-lit community, where people are standing out in their yards and interacting with students as they walk back and forth between downtown. Establishment of NEZs or Neighborhood Enterprise Zones to spur economic development, or to spur development, that would be in neighborhoods that are maybe on the gateways or connecting to downtown. It concentrates future development. Creation of a long-term vision for Stoffer Plaza and the riverfront. Not many downtowns have that kind of a gem, where right downtown, your river runs right through it. So what can you do to maximize that? And then encouragement of projects that reflect what the college would like to see in their long-term architectural plan, and that may or may not include pedestrian gateways connecting the hotel to the college, and pocket parks. Pocket parks are really the big thing right now, and they connect downtown to the riverfront or the parking. It's basically, instead of walking all the way around the block, it's a cut-through. And sometimes, instead of a three-floor building, you might demo that first floor so someone can get through and still have residential, so you're not losing that investment or that income from that property. so you're not losing that, uh, investment, or that income from that property. We talked earlier that it's, it's, all these partners have to be involved, that, uh, this plan is specific to what ARC can do. It is not a repeat of the Comprehensive Plan. It's not a repeat of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. It builds off of those. And this one particular, particularly, is one that, that you'll really see that. Um, we need to enhance our community gateways. We're lucky, we've got many of them. So we, we, we need to make those better. And the things that ARC has identified that they could do is streetscape improvements, encouraging that along the different corridors, wayfinding signage, and partnering with other communities, or other, other community partners. But this one really, really does hedge on, um, one of the other community partners to really lead this, lead the charge on this. This would be more them aiding in ways that directly align to their mission. And the last part is the social plan and strategy. Creating a community that become an attractive place for business employment and entertainment, an enhancement of quality life, providing more attainable housing options, creating jobs, and updating public infrastructure. It's important to change longstanding perceptions. So promotion of successes. We don't do a real good job telling what we're doing really good at. We don't get the message out. We've talked about a community branding, uh, platform, and many of us are working towards that, so that the message that goes out to the surrounding areas, to our own community is cohesive. If it comes out, they know that it's Albion that's having that good news. And it's not just this, you know, the Chamber sending something out and the college sending something out, it's telling the full story. Encouragement of the faith-based and other organizations in the redevelopment efforts, especially through the creation of a long-term, shared vision of the community. Making sure the vision is shared by all and everyone is on board, rowing in the same direction is critical to the success of this plan and all the other plans in the community. So I'm going to go back to that Big Albion Plan, and these details that I'm giving you are probably going to change. Hopefully for, probably higher, not lower. Um, but today is, it's time. We talked about those early investors, uh, and the investments that have happened. And if, like, we keep saying the window of opportunity is open. If we don't take it, that window's going to close, and how long before another opportunity comes around? Those early investments have taken some of their risk away of ARC doing something like this. It makes it ripe for them to think that this can be successful. I've been in economic development for a long time, and I've seen communities struggle over the years doing a development project by development project by development project. Mason is a great example of that. They've done a phenomenal job with their downtown. If you haven't visited, you should get over there. I just lost the name of the company, but they're, they're going to be getting a, what's the pizza place everyone goes to in Jackson? Yeah, that's it. They're getting one of those, so at least go there to see that. But they have taken like ten, twelve years to get where they're at. Um, by the time ten, twelve years go along, some of these early investments are going to be struggling. We don't have the time for that. So if those investments hadn't happened, we wouldn't be talking about a Big Albion Plan, because we wouldn't be able to substantiate that. We wouldn't be able to get the funding behind it, and you wouldn't be able to get the commitment on the backend of commercial tenants and residential tenants. The, probably the biggest component of why this will work is that of the buildings that I know of today that can be included in the plan, ninety percent of them are owned by three entities. From the years I've done projects like this at the state, that was the number-one sticking point. If you had too many cooks in the kitchen, you ruined your food. And it never got through, it never got off the ground, because you couldn't get everyone rowing in the same direction, at the same time, having all their ducks in the row, their financing, their owner's equity. There's lots and lots of stumbling blocks. So when MEDC came and listened to this being pitched, their eyes got really huge when they thought, oh my gosh, this is one that's going to go the distance, because we have some control here. Again, the partners are at the table, they're, they're interested, they're excited about this. I've already talked about MEDC, but like I said, they are excited. They would like to take Albion on the road and show other communities how this was done. So in a year, two years, when it's showing to be successful, we're going to be a national success story. We're working with other state departments to leverage their, their resources as well. Uh, everyone's kind of right now in budget, budget season and thinking about what projects are going to be highlighted, so it's a great time to be having those conversations. But like I said, for my, my time in, in economic development, this is a once-in-a-lifetime. It's not going to happen again. The tides aren't going to turn with just what we've got in process right now, it's going to take more. Um, but the, the really interesting part is in a community of this size, it doesn't take much for the ripple effects that'll come off of that to be felt by everyone. So the more that the downtown fills up, we'll bring more commercial businesses to Eaton Corridor. It provides for everyone. You know, you'll see more opportunity. It'll make it easier to attract, uh, employers, because there, they'll be easy to find employees, people will want to buy houses here. Um, there's just, there's so much opportunity that this is, I'm calling it the perfect plan, but we'll see, because it's going to be a lot of work. So what is it today? And again, 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 it's still changing. Um, but it's about eighty-six thousand seven hundred square feet of redeveloped space downtown. Right now, we're looking about twenty-two buildings or storefronts, depending on how you count them. And depending on which day I count, it comes up to a different number. Uh, but project cost somewhere between thirteen and sixteen million, and I would expect that to go up, because those are early, early pro forma statements. But right now, we're looking at the sources of funding. MEDC is, early on, without even seeing a full application, nodded their approval for community development grants and working with us on some, some new legislation, old legislation that no one's used, to use in Albion. Uh, we'll look at historic tax credits. Uh, but the owner equity portion is, is the holdup there. Everyone that's got a building that wants to be involved in this has to have twenty-five percent equity in it. So making sure that they can not only demonstrate that equity, and we don't hold up with the project, is going to be key. Not only demonstrate the equity, but demonstrate a pro forma that shows a positive cash flow. And that they can cover that period of time when you're still trying to get the people to come downtown, when you're still trying to get your commercial space filled. So there's going to be legs in that, and that's probably going to take a lot of work to identify those, those people. So it's today. Today, we're working on it, we're working on the pro formas. Uh, hopefully by 2019, it's all done. It would be lovely. The picture you see up there is just a graphic. It's one of the many documents I've been coloring there. It's got no meaning to the Big Albion Plan, but it gives you the idea of the concentration that it can happen. Um, we're working on defining what the development district would be. That's something that MEDC is, is pushing us to use. The application processes and what funding sources. And recruitment and coaching of entrepreneurs and retailers. And then ARC's focus really at this point is raising that, that owner equity. Even before we get to the owner equity, there is going to be a lot of cash that's needed to get this plan moving. Brownfield plans, work plans, um, architectural drawings, all of that costs money. So for every building that's involved in it, that owner's got to be able to come up with that upfront cash with no guarantee of the incentives on the other side. So when we look at what it is today, today, we've got vacant properties, we've got some that aren't scattered in between there. A lot of the buildings are crumbling, major repairs needed. The sidewalks don't have a lot of people walking around on them. We've got plenty of parking, we've got a brand-new, beautiful street. We've got a lot of opportunity. What could it look like in 2019? Hopefully, during this next couple of weeks, we'll have a, a picture to put there, because MEDC loves pictures. They like to see what it's going to look like. But in 2019, it could, it could be real, and at that time, we're going to have new commercial spaces next to redeveloped project, next to redeveloped project, instead of commercial that's brand-new, next to blighted, blighted. And we got a lot of, of empty space in between. We'll have increased foot traffic to the downtown. Why do I know that? Because all the studies show that for every resident that lives downtown, they bring three people to that area daily. That alone will draw commercial. But we're going to be looking at a vibrant, lively center for the community. Like I said, the spin-off will be felt immediately throughout the community and only increase. There'll be increased options for shopping, make it easier to attract other developments. We're working with, right now, a lot of housing developers, and they still feel too much risk. There's not enough people out there spending. The more we get through this, the easier it's going to be to work with them to commit. So the, the last one is just my information, and, uh, this is really designed as more of a fundraising pitch. So I'm going to end it with the fundraising pitch, just in case you're dying to know how you can be part of it. Donations are tax-deductible, and I can take any checks if you're dying to be part of it. No money is too little. Um, but it's a real opportunity. Today is about getting the city and the city mayor, the city manager, both, to sign the document. When we're looking at fundraising, even private fundraising, grants, foundation money, seeing that cohesiveness of all the partners signing on the dotted line sends a real message. Does, that page doesn't have to be in there. It can be taken out just as easily. But to me, it loses something in doing that. It really, really needs to start as a community plan, not replace any of the other community plans, but enhance them. So it's their portion. And with that, I will shut up. And you can ask questions, or I can sit down.
Thank you. Um, questions, comments from council? Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Lawler.
My comment is that I support this, uh, collaboration. Thank you for bringing the city to the table. For me, uh, this is inevitable. When you see twenty-two million dollars, uh, spent within Albion city limits to enhance our city, and if we, uh, do not take this opportunity to sign on a dotted line, we could alienate ourselves from the state cap. The governor, Senator Nas, Representative, Representative Bison, and the legislature is moving toward consolidation. Uh, we have the dashboard out there still that we could be part of at a stronger level. Regionalization is coming through, uh, Lansing, and they're looking for effective and efficient communities that are collaborating and growing together in unity. Also, the Albion Reinvestment Corporation is working in connection with, uh, Mr. Shaheen. My research for Mr. Shaheen, wow, it's, it's in-depth. Uh, Flint, Saginaw area, uh, through my, you know, different foundations there. Um, he's helped redesign that, that area of our state with, uh, investments. Um, and with support by collaboration with the EDC, ARC, Albion College, and others, our land bank, uh, the city of Albion, it would make us stronger, networking and resourcing. And we would be seen around the country as one of the, uh, pillars in coming together and producing for the future. If we don't take this, we're going to have collateral damage. Uh, we could alienate our future investors. Um, we would lose opportunities in bringing in the projected. Four thousand five hundred, uh, bodies and population, the increased unsuspected. And that, with four thousand five hundred people coming in, it would create economic indicators for prosperity and sustainability of Albion. So I'm asking this council to support this, uh, endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too am in support of, of this plan. I think it's an awesome plan, because Dr. Gobbins is testing. And, um, I do have a couple comments, and, um, just one concern that was brought to me for, um, from the community, and I'd like to, um, express it. Um, the market potential, um, area, which is more of, um, the col-, uh, Albion College Harrington Neighborhood and the Michigan Ave Corridor. Um, the only concern that had been brought to me was that, um, as far as my thing about unity, um, and a couple, um, different parts of Albion, um, feeling a little left out. Um, I do want to express to, um, the person that brought that concern to me, and I also had to learn it, um, was from one of my, uh, fourth precinct residents, um, and I thank her for it, Timper Temple, Stovall. Um, she asked me to express, um, to, to, talk about the concern of, of that. And what she brought to me was, um, we do have to put some things in place so that others, so that when it comes time for something else to advance, that we have to, um, just make sure it's in place so that it will be able to advance. And I thank her for that, um, piece of information.
Can I, before you move on, because my memory is bad, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Because that's absolutely right, but not why it's not enhanced in the plan. It's absolutely right, though. Um, this plan, again, is ARC, and their mission is the downtown and the connecting do-, or the connecting neighborhoods. So that's why those districts are in there. Again, it's not a repeat of any of the other plans, so it builds off of those.
Okay. Um, the other, um, question I have, you said that, um, there's a benefit for just the couple entities that own buildings downtown?
It, it's a benefit that there isn't, uh, out of twenty-two buildings, there's not twenty-two owners. Uh, it'd be much more difficult to do a project like this. We could do individual projects, but when you take to the state and you show them that boom, that's what gets their eyes raised. There, it's, those dollars that we compete for are very competitive. Um, so the, the big picture, the big, is going to get much more attention, much more assistance, uh, than us, a one-by-one-by-one project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted our community to get it broken down in case they didn't understand.
Happy to.
Appreciate it.
Do we need further comment from council? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just would like to say that, um, the advancing, the Albion Plan, it's really a no-brainer. I mean, we don't have anyone else sitting in the wings waiting to spend that kind of money in our community. So for me, it's really a no-brainer. However, and I recognize the great work that can be accomplished, um, for this community via ARC. And I'm certainly, um, uh, do not want to be and will not be an impediment to progress for this community. And I do want to, um, applaud ARC, because I heard you mention something about, um, a Shark Tank, a, um, incubator for, um, future businesses that want to, um, be a part of downtown. And I just, as being a representative for the city of Albion, um, I have talked to several people, and, um, they are, who may be interested in a future in the downtown area in providing a type of service or, um, that is not, um, being, currently being available, um, in the downtown area. So the fact that they recognize that and that, um, is something that they would be looking out for, I'm, I'm encouraged and I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. So, um, uh, that is my point. I, I think it's a great plan, and, and I certainly can get on board and support it.
I would encourage, when you hear those comments, to send them to the EDC. We team with the Small Business Development Center, and we're already working with several people that are interested in downtown space when it's redeveloped. I mean, it only sets their business up for the best success possible, instead of trying to struggle in early years when there's not, especially with the construction of this past year, and being in that environment. So send them there, because the process of making that dream come to a reality takes time.
Yeah.
And we, we'll work with them right now on getting that business plan in place and really identify if that dream- and really identify if that dream can become their lifetime job.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could briefly explain the difference for our, our community members? The difference between ARC and that mission and the EDC?
So the ARC's mission is, is based on strictly the downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. The EDC's mission is based on all of Albion, Sheridan Township, and Albion Township. We help all of that. I think I've talked to you in the past many times about what a tr-, a traditional EDC does in communities of any size, like Battle Creek, for instance. Battle Creek, or Battle Creek Unlimited strictly does manufacturing. That's all they do. But they've got the luxury of having an operating DDA. And they've got, uh, an individual on contract, I think they're actually increasing his time, to, uh, work with businesses in the downtown. So, communities that don't have that luxury, you have to wear multiple hats. So with, with the job that I accepted here, I knew I'd be wearing those dif-, those different hats, and that excited me. I love working with manufacturers. I've worked with them for 20 years. But the community portion, you know, I, I believe it was, because I watched the, the budget, that I, I apologize, I couldn't be at the budget session. I think it was, Councilmember Spicer mentioned about a grocery store and, and wanting feedback on that. Those kinds of things where I call more community development, the community needs it. There'll be some jobs, but I wouldn't really call it a true EDC function. Those are really where I see the unison between ARC and EDC benefiting the community. Because if ARC doesn't do this, there's no chance we'll ever get a grocery store. Now, I'm not saying that we'll get a grocery store with ARC, but that's how I'm going to be able to pitch that. Because if we don't have the population to get that grocery store, and we don't have the big box store that is usually their first check box, we're kind of left out in the cold. But if we can go in there and say, hey, there's a community organization, a charitable organization, that'll give you completely redeveloped space, and we can help you be successful by partnering, and taking some of that risk off of you in the early years, we have a really good chance of getting something. So it's probably not going to be a Kroger. It's probably not going to be an Aldi. But it might be somebody, and that's where I see, um, the overlap. You know, the fact that I'm working with a lot of small businesses right now that have come in and said they want to open a business in the downtown. Being able to know what the plans are and how we can do it actually helps them. Because I can kind of lead them down that path. Don't, don't jump the gun to get into a space where you're going to struggle. Let's set you up for the best pit, best spot possible that you can be successful. So there's, you know, I think we talked about, you, you like the partners, economic and jobs and all of that. A tr-, a traditional EDC is focused on manufacturing jobs, manufacturing investment. Uh, I wouldn't be all, all that busy if we, I was just a traditional, uh, EDC. And there's days I would be okay with that. But most days, I like being really busy. So, um, what ARC is doing, where I see it crosses over, is it's making it a place where people are going to start saying, hey, I want to live downtown. I want to buy a house there. Houses are reasonable, let's buy a house. That creates workforce. It makes me pitch in to a manufacturer so much easier. So the missions themselves differ on geographic scope, even though EDC encovers all that. Uh, so does the DDA, covers the downtown. But we don't have a functioning DDA. We have a board, but no staff. So I see a lot of, of unities between the two.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Amy, for that. So, the, the plan is awesome. It looks great. I don't, I don't think anybody on council is, um, wanting to hinder the progress that's happening downtown. I know residents, um, even in my precinct and outside of my precinct, have concerns about where they fit in this new vision. A lot of people are looking for jobs. And, and I hear, um, in the vision that we want people to come in and buy homes and, and live downtown. And I, I support that vision completely. And I also, within the plan, um, there was a mention about walk to work and, can you speak a little bit about, um, where are they going to work when they get here? What's the plan for, um, economic development to bring in jobs, to, um, give more of incentives for people in surrounding counties and communities to want to come here and be able to make a living? And even our current residents to be able to make a living, to keep downtown sustainable and, and have money to spend, um, to keep the businesses afloat?
There's jobs available, so I'm not sure, and, and, and we've, this wasn't an economic development discussion, but let me address that.
Okay.
Let me address that, because I think it's a very important topic. You know, I opened with the job fair today. We saw an incredible outpour of people that want to. But what I didn't see were the residents that have disengaged. We saw some. That's the target I was going for. And that's the target we need to tap into. Because today, if we try to bring a manufacturer here, and right now I'm working with four of them, I'll be honest, I think two of them just pulled away. And, uh, I'm not even going to speculate on what those reasons are, but I think there's just too, uh, too much instability in the community right now. But the first thing I'm always, always trying to defend is our unemployment rate. Our unemployment shows that we don't have any workers. So they're going to have to pay higher wages to steal them from the next business, which makes that business pay higher wages to keep them. And all we're doing is stealing, robbing, to pay Paul. So, we have to find a way, that doesn't stop me from going after manufacturers, but we have to find a way to present an opportunity that makes it easy, that makes it a, a no-brainer. We've got location. Nothing ARC can do, EDC can do, can change that. We've got it. Thank God. But if we can show that our population is growing, that, that, that there are people here willing to take those jobs, if we can get those diseng-, disengaged residents back included in those labor numbers, we'll start to show that. And really, we can make a mo-, we can start moving on manufacturing.
Councilmember Barnes.
From my perspective, Amy, uh, we're talking about two different, uh, directions when we talk about, uh, this ARC situation right now. I think it's very profound on page number seven of the Advancing Albion Action Plan. The highlight is Albion must reinvent, diversify, and stabilize its post-industrial economy to meet the changing 21st economic landscape. Right now, I think I can identify our millennials as probably ages 24 to 26. And most technologies follow those children, those kids where they're going. Chicago is a big, big that. I go home to Grand Rapids regularly now, and I'm seeing where they're doing, they, they did exactly what you, you all are trying to do in this collaboration. They're, I'm going to use the term short-sweet. You build, they'll come. Now, we get into the different demographics far as education, socioeconomic status, and, and, and close demographics far as employment. My understanding from EDC, the traditional one, they look to bring in different organizations that supply, uh, jobs. Uh, they could be manufacturing, they could be technologies. But that's also connected to that city's master plan, that city's planning commission plan, and the comprehensive plan. So right now, for me, I think that we should really identify, rein-, reinvent and diversify. That's what you guys are doing now. So I would like to move forward with this discussion in that arena, and we take the vote.
So, one of the questions I have, so you, it was a discussion of the Upper Story Apartments, and just want to piggyback off some of the comments. What demographic do you envision living there?
So part of the MEDC community funds, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. So what I didn't say in, in that presentation, I don't think I remember saying, is, right now, just in the square footage alone, we're looking at about 55 apartments, new apartments to downtown, not, not what's already there. There'll be a blend of market rate, there'll be a blend of affordable or attainable. There'll be a blend of sizes. Uh, some people are looking for just the studio apartment because that's all they, they, you know, they don't want to spend all weekend cleaning the darn thing. So, um, there's got, there's a lot of work to be done to that, but it's going to come down to each and every development. And development isn't the big Albion plan. It is each and every one that's cash flowing, and how they can cash flow. So part of that financing has to be traditional financing. And, um, banks have their own, their own, uh, regulations on that, and so does MEDC. MEDC is going to push for a higher market rate, uh, percentage than we probably will want in Albion. So it'll be a partnership to figure out what works best for each specific location, how it ca-, cash flows, and overall the mix.
Because I, I, you know, listening to some of the comments, uh, Councilmember Brown kind of stole some of my fire there. I think, you know, when I hear stakeholders of the community, I hear this, there's a phrase I hear, and it's kind of a overarching thing, is the new Albion. Um, that's something I hear that's, uh, um, you know, it's, it shows up, pops up in, in discussions in the paper. And one of the concerns that I have, and I, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Barnes, is that, you know, Albion is this post-industrial area. Basically, we have retirees who made decent money in Harvard, and they, they're here. So you have an aging population, middle-class population. We have a situation where, uh, you know, when I was growing up here, the faculty of the college stayed in town. And I imagine that's the purpose of the Harrington Project, is to, um, allow faculty and staff to come back to town. But one of the things that, and, you know, and I, I would include myself in concerns about what Councilmember Spicer said about, um, what you call kind of community needs, um, is when, uh, we pitch this to community people, when we talk to them and say, okay, we're supporting this, it, it's helpful to be able to say that there's going to be a tangible improvement in your quality of life in the city. Because one of the things that, uh, and I get what Councilmember Barnes was saying, but, you know, if you, if, if, if you look at, uh, downtown or midtown Detroit, if you look at Grand Rapids, some of those cities, you know, they do have, you know, major anchoring employers, right? I mean, that's, that's one of the things that is, is probably drawing, uh, millennials to those, those areas. And so, I, I can imagine, um, you know, college staff, recent alums, or retirees, you know, moving into that, into those spaces. And then, um, you know, we have, there's a component that, you know, there's the Harrington Corridor, there's the Michigan Ave Corridor. But what it, what it boils down to me, and the question I have, is, is the window of time so small that we would, we would have redeveloped downtown, but then after that, you know, things fizzle? In terms of addressing those community needs? Or, or stated another way, how can we, um, how can we make sure that those community needs are a part of, you know, the big Albion plan, the new Albion? You know, that, that's, that's basically a motivating concern that I have. Because one of the things I have, I was thinking about too, is, um, there are people, and I've expressed this to other stakeholders in the community, there are people who, um, and I, and I applaud the four, the four board members of ARC, uh, but there are individuals who, you know, have been successful, who, um, you know, have capital, and they care about Albion. So how can we, and I, I know I can probably give them, you know, your contact information, but how can we include them? Because, um, if we don't, I think that the perception a lot of times turns into reality, and it's, it's, uh, a sense that things are getting done, um, but it's this, you know, these stakeholders who are doing it, and it's done for, you know, their purpose and not necessarily for an inclusive kind of way. So how, how can we, basically, basically through things, how can we find a way between ARC, EDC to, and, and even with the, you know, the planning department here? Because I, I know that, um, Mr. Tracy has done some things too on, on Northeaston Street. But address community needs, and then also find a way to have community, either people who are still, who are living here, like local entrepreneurs, or people who have left, but who are still connected to the community and have either, you know, financial, uh, means or, you know, networking, or have a network to be involved and, and to, uh...
So I guess I'm a, I'm a little concerned, confused. And maybe that's because my memory, again, is not so good. So long things, short answers. Are you asking for them to be involved in developments? Are you asking them for to be involved in ARC Board? Which, which direction are we going?
So, one thing, okay, so, I guess I'll start with a, a tangible thing. There's, there's at least probably five individuals who have come to me, uh, over the past couple months, interested in property, um, in the downtown area. And, uh, you know, I've had a conversation with, you know, well, I forwarded them to, you know, EDC ARC, and then I've had conversations yesterday with, uh, the land bank. And one of the, one of the concerns that I had was, um, what they were told was, you know, just kind of wait until we can get some things in order. Um, and I'm assuming that has to deal with this plan and trying to develop some of the spaces downtown.
I can't speak to just wait. I mean, unless it was a business that's looking to open a commercial space.
Okay.
They're not wanting to buy it, then, uh, yeah, they're working on their business plan, and, and we're working through that process. And then, once we know the timing of the redeveloped space, then we can start working more towards that ARC tank.
Okay.
If it's properties, uh, the, right now, it's unfortunate that the, uh, land bank properties are on, on hold while the, the transform, this commercial property is put in place. But I too have talked with Krista, and she's working hard to get that launched in early, uh, 2018. So I'm guessing those are probably some of the properties that, that we're talking about. But right now, there's nothing I can do on that. But once they can pitch those and get, get that moving, and we can identify developers for all those, those are the ones that I said, when I said earlier, that I'm working, trying to identify who's going to be in this. ARC doesn't want to do more than ARC's buildings. So if there's others that can, can do it, can move it along, we need to identify them and be working with them. If it's a non-CCLB property and, and they can acquire it, send them to me.
So the, the three, you said that there are three, um, entities that own 90% of the properties. What are those three entities?
Those three entities are ARC, CCLB, and they don't technically, well, oh, Krista can answer that. Own, hold, I'm not sure how that all works. And then Bishop, uh, Bishop Properties, Bishop Acquisitions. It's been a long day, I'm tired. But that's Sam Shaheen's development arm, and he owns some too. Oh, I'm sorry. Ace Investments, Bill's, uh, investment arm is one too.
Okay.
So there could be four.
Okay. And so, when you're, you're pitching this, is there, is there an, is there a, at a certain point, is ARC going to try to acquire the other properties?
The other CCLB, I'm sorry, Calhoun County Land Bank properties?
Or the Bishop, or the Ace, or...
That, those details haven't been worked out. I don't know that all of those, I, um, Bill is here, he could speak to, to Aces. I don't think he's willing to let me, uh, get my hands on them. But, do I see Sam maybe doing something with his? Probably. You know, it could happen. But those are the details right now that we really, really, really need to work all, uh, work out. Because before we go to, to MEDC with, uh, with... Because before we go to MEDC with our pre-app, we have to have all those owners identified. And from that point, it can't change. We gotta make sure everyone's ready to go the distance.
So, like I said, I think, my sense is, okay, my sense is that the council's going to support it, that's the sense that I get, and I support it. But I think my concern is that, in this window of time, the, let's say, basic kind of community needs are not going to be met or are going to kind of be put to the side in pursuit of that, and I would hate to see that happen, so.
You know, I can't tell you how I split my time down to the minute. If I tried to keep in track of that, I wouldn't get anything done. But I can tell you, and the president of ARC is in this room, so I'm going to say this and he's going to hear it. They pay fifty percent of my salary. They should get fifty percent of my time. They haven't got anywhere near fifty percent of my time. Now, as we move towards the big Albion plan in January, I will probably be working a lot on that. I also am working way over my forty hours, way over my forty hours, and that's got to change. I've got to kind of come back to a level. So I've got to find a way personally, myself, to balance both of those. We've got more staff in the office. Danielle won't be working a hundred percent on RRC anymore. So come January one, I'm snaking her away and going to teach her a lot of different things. So I don't know that, I don't know of anybody that's been ignored. We make it our best effort to never let that happen, to return emails, to get back to things. We're stumbling. There's things we uncover that we don't think, you know, we think is already a process in place and we don't know, but we get through it. So do I think that the community as a whole will suffer because I'm the executive director of ARC? Absolutely not. I think the closer we get towards putting an application in on that big Albion plan, the easier it is going to be for me to go to a grocery store and try to get them to commit to investing in Albion. I think it'll be easier for me to work with manufacturers when they see a total end to the process. When that stuff starts to smooth out, you know, it's not going to be two years and then all of a sudden I shift to the community again. And the other thing I want to make sure, I've said this now a couple of times, and I want to make sure I repeat it. This plan is focused on the downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. There are many other plans that focus on all the other areas, and those plans have to move forward too. So we're being held accountable to those plans. My board is not going to tolerate, you're on my board, they're not going to tolerate if I come in and all I talk about is ARC. We gotta, we gotta make sure we're still going after it. We're still working with over thirty projects and prospects that have nothing to do with ARC. Not one thing. So the synergy is very, very important. The fact that I can, the fact that I need to balance my time better is going to be very, very important. But I would be the first one to, if I heard there was concerns, I'd be the first one to want to make sure they were addressing them, let's get them done. We're going to be spending a ton of time this first quarter of 2018 on the workforce development for the manufacturing sector, working with KCC and others. That's going to take a lot of focus. That's directly for the community.
Councilmember French, Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the big Albion plan, you talked about twenty-two vacant properties. Are there any other vacant properties in the downtown that are not part of the big Albion?
Yes, well, and, yes, there are some that are vacant or underutilized or in bad need of some investment. And the hope would be to go to those people. You know, part of this is, we haven't socialized this plan because it's still being approved. It's gotten out in the community way farther than I expected it to, until all those signatures are on there. But once it's approved and we're going, I want to get out into the community, I want to get into the downtown and talk to all those owners so they know, and they can get on board. You know, the existing businesses that are down there, now's the time. Let's leverage the funds from a big project versus a little project.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barnes.
I see this as a collaboration where we're being asked to sign on part of this dynamic situation. However, it is really just a piece of a puzzle in our city. We had a target market analysis maybe a year and a half ago, and it identified through nationwide surveys and our own survey here, how other cities were redeveloping. For me, these investors have gotten together and only stated, hey, let's start here. They picked out the downtown area as their target market, and they decided to bring us in. They brought in their money. Now, I understand that I represent Precinct One, and regularly, I do get the same spiel that a lot of people get, and I have to tell them, well, right now, I don't even know the identity of Albion. I said, what is our vision? Are we going to be a retirement town? Are we going to be a college town? Are we going to be a bed and breakfast town? Are we going to be a commuting town? Are we going to be a suburb of the surrounding cities? Until we identify that, our direction in the aggregate is not even there. But what's happening right now with these different organizations coming in and asking us to collaborate, we're putting the puzzle together piece by piece. My pet peeve is Austin Avenue. There's no development there. But I understand, I understand the financing, I understand the investors. Shaheen has done great around that region of our state. He had a risk analysis and he had a risk ratio. The tipping point for him to come to Albion was the people that he was going to deal with. Mr. Dolls, the college, Ori Ditzer, City of Albion's EDC. He took a risk ratio and risk analysis and said, I'm going with them because they're dedicated. And I'm saying, yes, I want my area also to be sustainable. I want, but right now, Junior Barnes ain't bringing a dime to the table. But Junior Barnes got to work and network with these people, hoping that we can work together. When I was going to the Michigan Municipal League, I saw great things done. I go to my very own home in Grand Rapids, and it blows my mind what they have done together, working with the city in collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a number of things that you pointed out that I think I do want to touch base on, and Amy alluded to them, and that there are multiple plans that are now in place. And if you recall, even our comprehensive plan in particular spells out a focus on revitalization of our neighborhoods. So in no way, because we're talking about the big Albion plan or the advancing Albion action plan, are we saying that we are going to in any way neglect or overlook the neighborhoods and the blocks within our community because they are a critical component. And in particular, I want to remind you that the AmeriCorps Vista's working in the city hall are going to be launching the neighborhood planning councils so that we can have feedback from the residents relative to the plans for the neighborhoods. And another one of the goals that you identified as council was looking into the neighborhood enterprise zones so that we can look at, are there some incentives that we can put in place for the redevelopment of homes in our community? So all of this is a part of the puzzle that you alluded to. And I'm very excited that we are so collaborative in this approach to the growth and development of our entire community. And I do want to advise you that the Downtown Development Authority yesterday voted to also approve their support of the advancing Albion action plan. And it was shared with the Albion Building Authority, and they voiced no objections to it as well. And I had an email communication from Kelly Scott from Calhoun County, who was enthusiastically supportive of it, and I don't want to overlook that Krista Trout Edwards is here from the land bank to also indicate that they are supportive of this initiative. And one of the things that makes us unique and special is that we have a broad cross-section of collaboration in moving our community forward.
So Krista, would you like to... Do you just want to speak to the agreement and what the board, the land bank board is going to be doing? Yeah.
So the land bank has been involved in Albion for a long time, since 2011. We've done lots of different things, but our role is really to support neighborhood and commercial district revitalization. So early on, we did what we could with the money that we had, and then we started writing grants and started partnering. And so we've partnered with the predecessor to ARC back in 2013. That was when our first land banking agreement was done. And those buildings that came in, some of them have become different things. Two of them would be going into that theater project that was recently announced with a Gersdacher grant. And at the time that we were approached with that land banking agreement, those properties were all at risk of tax foreclosure. So our board looked at it as we are probably going to get these buildings one way or another, and it's much better together with an investor who is interested in putting money in and who has money to put in to the buildings. And so we started that land banking agreement in 2013. It was extended for a year in 2014 and a year in 2015. And of course, we came here last year, we revised it, we asked for the city council's support to work with ARC, and we revised that whole thing, and they took over the land banking agreement. Their requirement was they needed to get two properties identified for redevelopment, create a redevelopment plan and have secured funding, and they have done that with the 117 and 119 South Superior for the theater project. So we had talked with my board and with Garrett, Cheryl, Lynn about supporting it and extending it for one additional year because now there would be three properties left in that land banking agreement. Once the 117 and 119 come out, those will come out when they get their environmental studies done. So whenever you're transferring commercial property, if you do not do your due diligence and get your environmental studies done, you accept liability for whatever happened there before, which isn't a good thing. So they do need to get their environmental studies done, and then we would be transferring those back. So today, my board did approve a one-year extension with support from the city council here. So I'll be here on Monday as well to talk about that. But as far as the Albion plan goes and downtown development and these buildings, it's really difficult to find investors and to find somebody that's so committed. You know, the land bank is able to do lots of things. We're able to write grants. We actually wrote the target market grant. We've put money into stabilized buildings, but we don't have that capital to really turn those buildings around. And we, you know, you had mentioned, how many properties does the land bank own? We own five outright through tax foreclosures. One of them is burned out by fire. One of them, the second story collapsed into the first, and we stabilized that with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars after foreclosure. And the other one surrounds Dickerson's, and we've had a lot of interest in those. We haven't felt comfortable, we did market them and we got lots of folks interested, but nobody had a business plan. Nobody had a real way to demonstrate funding, and that concerned us because we've learned along the way. And so what we decided to do was start this transform, this commercial property, and we had hoped to have that done earlier this year. But we are also running a three-point-eight million dollar demo grant, and that's really taken a lot of my staff time and capacity. So it's, that program has been through the legal review, it's just, is not in a presentable application and format. And what we wanted to do with that is, you know, we had some missteps, you know, with developers. And when I looked at what happened in the process, I thought, we are not being clear with what we need and what we want. And so we need to do, we need to do that. That's our responsibility to be clear so everybody knows what to expect. And then we also wanted to loop in the local unit, so whether it's in Emmett Township or Albion or Battle Creek, there's a development review committee. We would be marketing our properties through an RFP, and there'd be a development review committee, so the local unit would be brought in. So that's what that's all about. And then we have the five properties that we hold in the land banking agreement with ARC, which would go down to three after the two are transferred out. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer that.
So, aware of, that you have the one grant that you're administering, when would you see the criteria for the transform this commercial property?
We're looking to do that in January because we've got a lot of the work done. I'm actually meeting an appraiser here on Monday to look at our holdings downtown, just to get some more information. We use broker opinions on residential houses, and that works really well. It doesn't work so well for commercial. And so I needed to get a better idea. So I've been doing some investigation to try and get a better price or really understand how it looks, you know, from that professional.
Any questions for council?
All right, see you on Monday.
Thank you. Are there any, well, I guess I do have one question, one additional question. So the agreement between ARC and EDC has expired?
It has.
Okay, so what's the status of that? What's the next?
We're working through, trying to decide if that should be renewed, and hopefully, it would come to the February first EDC Board.
That's, Councilmember Barnes.
I would like it to be put in the record that I'm recommending that Albion City Council signs the paperwork for collaboration with ARC and EDC and others. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to vote on Monday. If there are no further questions or comments, thank you. Okay. Item B, city manager salary negotiations. Do you want to, okay.
Sure, okay. Well, thank you, and I'm glad you mentioned the new Albion as a concept. When I first came here in 2014, you know, I had anticipated that we had to build more positive relationships with many of our community partners and stakeholders and entities within the region and state. What I did not expect was that we really needed to change our own attitude about ourselves here in Albion because there truly is a gem in terms of what we have. You know, the people show up and sometimes show out, but we're, no, it's a wonderful community, and we have so many positive things going on. So the focus of the new Albion is on communication because one of the things is not everybody understands or hears the same message. So we get the word out to everyone that as best we can, and using innovation in that regard. So we have the e-newsletter, and we're working closely with all types of organizations and media to try to better promote all the great things that are going on. And of course, collaboration, collaboration is key. It is essential that we have a unified message and that we can demonstrate to people who are looking that we are moving in a positive direction together. And I don't know if you heard when Amy was saying that uncertainty has implications in regards to attracting businesses, in regards to being able to be successful in our fundraising efforts. So it's critical that things such as the action plan are supported by all the entities that we can get on board. And if you have questions and concerns, then yes, raise them so that they can be responded to. But we have to keep moving forward together and keep the momentum going because the transformation has begun, and it is so critical that we keep that going. So in that regard, if you recall, on October 24th, the council adopted a resolution in regards to entering into contract negotiations with your city manager meeting. And I currently have a two-year contract that ends on September 1 of 2018. And one of the points that was raised previously was that there was some discomfort with changing within the currently existing contract. But I just wanted to remind you that you did act previously with the contract relative to your council here in regards to both changing the term of the contract as well as the financial compensation within it. And also, my city manager's contract specifically states that in addition to, the city may increase the salary and benefits of the city manager in such amounts and to such an extent as the city may determine is appropriate on the basis of an annual review of the city manager. We did complete the annual review, and I believe I received an overall score of four point five out of a total of five possible points. One of the things I want to remind you of is that prior to my arrival here in Albion, the employees had not received an increase in over four years and in fact had been subjected to cuts. And there had been layoffs because we were definitely on a... And there had been layoffs, because we were definitely on a downturn. But one of the things I also recognized is that in those communities that had emergency managers, one of the signals that you are in financial distress is if, after four years, your employees have not had an increase. So, one of the things I definitely wanted to immediately impact, both in terms of this financial implications, but also in terms of recognizing that our employees have sacrificed for many years, and they deserve to have some type of increase relative to their compensation. So, since I've been here each year, they have received annual increases. I also want to remind you that I chose on a couple of occasions not to receive an increase. One, I wanted to send a positive message, and two, I wanted to wait until our city was on a stronger financial footing before I asked for additional compensation. So, at this point, I think we're on much stronger ground. We had over a 30% fund balance, when it's only required or recommended from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, that you have between 15 and 70% fund balance. So, we're in much greater standing for basically the first time. Our property tax values have not declined overall. So, the upswing, the uptick is here. So, I think it's appropriate at this time that I do ask for additional compensation because of our stronger financial status. There is information available from MML, and I do have it if you want it, in regards to the compensation for 2017 for city managers in other communities. You can look at size, you can look at general fund revenues. But what you won't see in looking at that data is their years of experience. You won't see their levels of education. I have a doctor's degree. I'm one of the few in the state of Michigan with that level of education. I'm one of the few in the state of Michigan who have, has at least 30 years of experience. And what you probably don't know is I worked for the Wayne County Economic Development Corporation, because it's not even on my resume, because it was so long ago. I don't even list it any longer. But I just have a wealth of training and experience that I bring here, and I bring it here because I love this community. Also, I took the time to look back at my job description, and you guys forgot to tell me some things. So, as Amy had mentioned previously, most other communities, you will find that if they have a downtown development authority, they have a paid staff person to do that work. And our DDA is no longer in the financial condition to hire someone, but someone has to do the work. So, not only is the EDC taking some of that lift, I am. But in addition to the DDA, I'm the chief administrator to support your Albion Building Authority, the Planning Commission, and any of the other boards and commissions and committees that you come up with, in addition to the additional study sessions that we now have with council, which I know you guys enjoy them greatly, but it definitely has an impact on myself and our staff, the clerk in particular, because there's time that goes into the preparation of these agendas to make certain that you have the information that you need in order to make an informed decision. And just to give you one small aspect in regards to the Albion Building Authority, which recently has put the 309 North Superior on the market. Earlier in that process, I was negotiating the leases with the occupants there. Then I was attempting to negotiate the sale. After that, I had to create the RFP for them to solicit a realtor to list the property. This all takes time and effort, and in no way is it listed in my job description, but it's still work that needs to get done. Also, I want to mention that there's real value in terms of what I've brought to this community in over one and a half million dollars in grant dollars that you would not have otherwise had, including the $900,000 for the wastewater treatment plant, $500,000 for the water tower, $130,000 for Holland Park, and numerous other grants. Probably most important is that I believe that I've been key in building the relationships that we have and the collaborations that we have with other entities in this area. One of the things very recently was relative to the Albion-Marshall Connector, which we know was funding at least a $30,000 deficit each year, but we also understood that the people of our community needed this service to help them get to, for those health services, shopping, whatever it was that they needed between Albion and Marshall. But because we were able to come together, instead of the city having to foot the $30,000 shortfall, again, we were able to come to a collaborative agreement in which the city's portion is only $3,000. So, that's a real savings and impact relative to what can be accomplished and what has been accomplished under my leadership. And in no way do I want to say I've done all of this alone, because it all is about working with other individuals and entities. But I do think that it's time that there is equity relative to my compensation. Most recently, we're in negotiations with a cell phone service relative to installing a tower here that's also going to generate almost $15,000 a year in revenues that we would not have otherwise seen. And this is a negotiation that fell through under a previous administration. So, within that vein, I'm again indicating that my initial request for a $12,000 increase was brought before you previously, and you declined to accept that. But I do want to indicate that I am open to negotiate on a term other than that. So, I eagerly await your response.
Councilmember Barnes, councilmember Spicer.
I would ask that this council grant our city manager, Dr. Mitchell's request of the $12,000 increase in her salary. I would also like to make the footnote in today's climate, men dominate the city manager positions in our nature, and there is a disparity in the wages and compensation for women. Dr. Mitchell is a female. She's also an African-American minority, so she has two minority points, female and African-American, I think that should be considered in today's climate compensation. The presentation that she just gave us is real, can be fact-checked. And I think the dynamics that she has brought to our community and the overwhelming response that this city has shown her and the love and care, and even this council stated that they, you know, care about her and would like to see her compensated at a different level. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was going to make a suggestion, however, I think we have to rule on Councilman Barnes?
We're not, we're not voting tonight.
Then I can make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would, given what Dr. Mitchell has said and in previous conversations with her, I would like to recommend that we offer Dr. Mitchell a 7% salary increase for her consideration.
What would that be?
$7,080.
What is it?
$7,080.
I think it's $6720.
What is it?
Yeah, $6720.
$6,720.
So, you're basing it on 2017 or 2018?
$96,000 is her current salary.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I was basing it on the projected for next year as written in our contract.
Councilmember Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to say that I don't, I don't like to speak on behalf of the entire council, but I'm comfortable in this situation saying that the council, we do love Dr. Mitchell, and we recognize the great things that she's done here. I know our last resolution, we voted unanimously to agree to a salary increase. At this point, I think it's just deciding as a council what that increase will be. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I know this is on the agenda for Monday's meeting, correct? So, yeah, I just, I just want to say publicly that we do, we do recognize the work, and I don't want you to think that we don't. We do. And we have agreed unanimously to give you a salary increase, so, okay? All right, I'm done.
So, one of the questions I have, so, the instances in which you kind of forego, you didn't accept the, I guess, the 1% or 2% increase that we do with the staff, can you tell me how many, I guess, if we were to add them together, how many, what percentage that would be? So, it was like, there was, I think there was one the first year?
One and two years subsequently. So, 2015 was 1%, 16, 2, 17, 2, and recommended to for 2018.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
Basically, in the, during the manager's tenure here, in each of the years, we've increased the, just a general increase across the staff. And so, I was asking what those percentages were in each of the years, just to get a sense. And then, I know this year, we did, there was, well, the administrative, the department heads are getting the 2% that the general city is getting, and then they're getting an additional 2%.
Right. In addition, the hourly employees also receive step increases, which range depending on where they are between 2% and 8% in addition to the 2%.
Okay. And then, what was in the contract, just as is, when you met the 3.7 threshold for the evaluation, there was an increase there, but you're not, are you, are you accepting that one? Has that been included?
I'm not starting to understand your question. So, presently, my salary is $96,000.
Okay.
If, if the assumption is that you're doing the 2% increase along with a 2% for the administrative staff, that amount is $97,920. So, if your question is, what would I find an acceptable compromise in this conversation that would reflect my equity with my peers and based on my education, experience, and accomplishments, then I would say that I would be looking at 105 as an appropriate compromise and in line with what Councilmember Spicer had suggested, which is approximately 7% based on the 2018 salary.
One, so, I guess, well, my question was a little bit more specific. So, with the, and I could be incorrect, but with the evaluation, if it's, I think it's 3.7, correct? If there's a threshold for the evaluation where if you meet a certain score above that, there's like an automatic step increase?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I was just saying, you, did you take the bonus, or did you not take the bonus?
Yes.
You did, okay. So, that's, but with the bonus, that's the 90?
The bonus is a separate.
Okay, but that's, okay. Okay. So, that's just a one-time bonus, okay. Councilmember Barnes?
I've heard some tangible numbers. Mine was the $12,000. Then I heard a $7,000.
You heard a 7%.
Just 7%.
7%, well, six grand, $6,800, 7%. I'm asking, could we come to a compromise at $9,500? Where's the raise for the Albion city manager?
Let's see. Did you, oh, Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely agree that our city manager's salary does deserve an increase out of all the good work that she's done and dedicated to Albion, to see us grow. The thing that, only thing that I'm looking at is, and I don't have a problem with her salary increase at all, I know that we'll be looking at a couple new positions that'll be, that are out there for discussion. I know that there was 4% raises for some city workers, and I don't know where we are. Hopefully, not going to do a recall. So, these things are just things that are just flying off the top of my head and that I'm thinking about. But I am in support of Dr. Mitchell receiving something for her hard work and dedication.
So, can I, just, so, I'm going to have a comment, then back to Councilmember Spicer. So, the $12,000 is a 12.5% increase. If we met, let's say we halve that, and let's say it was 6, that'd be a 6.25%. Councilmember Spicer's actually, what she's suggesting is even higher than that.
Higher than?
You said 7%.
Right.
Okay. It's higher than the other, because you were saying, you were saying, what percentage, you said?
I was just saying, flat $9,500. 7% comes in, $6,500, $800, almost $7,000.
Okay. Councilmember French?
I think that this conversation is very productive and fruitful, and I really agree, I think, with Councilwoman Spicer's assessment, which mirrors what Dr. Mitchell is asking for. I think about all the work that she's done and her deep involvement and commitment to the community and the involvement that she has and all the boards that she's done. I've looked at the database that MML has. I definitely see gender bias in that list, regardless of the size of the community. Women, regardless of their experience, are paid less. I'd like to take a, take a stand and say that she's asking for 105. She's more than worth it. I would agree with Councilman Barnes that when I put forth at the last council meeting, the number I put forth was because I felt that that was a value statement to the value that we place on our city manager. But if she's going to be happy with 105, I see that as a savings of $7,000 to the city based on what Councilman Barnes has offered. And I, and it's what she is willing to accept, and I would hope that we would accept that as a, as a, as a nice place to be. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes, no, no, excuse me. I interrupted you. So, Councilmember Spicer, and then Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, and this will probably be my last comment on this matter, because, I mean, we've beat this horse to death, so, okay. I want to say, I think for Dr. Mitchell, in conversations with her, you know, it's not so much about the money. Money does matter. However, I think we, she, you know, wants to, we want to show her that we appreciate her and we respect her wishes and what she wants. She is willing to negotiate and compromise with us, and I think this is fair, and I think she does too, as she's indicated. However, for her, I think it's more important that we have a great working relationship, you know, that she is appreciated and respected. And I think if we can do this and move on, I think we can get to that point where have some plans, some tentative dates to meet with an attorney, to get some counsel and city manager, and we're moving forward with MML to get training. And I think we're going to be working toward a great end. And I think that she would appreciate, I think she can appreciate that as much as some compensation. So, in that vein, that's my last comment, and I'm done with this. And my 7% request for the city manager increase is what I stand by. Thank you so much.
All right.
I'll pass.
Okay. So, there's seven, there's nine.
$9,500.
So, we vote Monday.
So we vote Monday, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, so I guess the question is, is there a resolution on Monday?
Is there a resolution?
I guess.
Okay.
It'll be one, I'd do it.
Um, I, you know, for, for me, I'll, I'll say this too. I think this has been a trying time for the city in general. Uh, I want to move forward. I, like I've mentioned in other meetings, the fact that I was on the council when Dr. Man, uh, Dr. Mitchell was hired and voted to support her hiring. And one of the things I feel like is, you know, she's definitely capable. I think one of the things that, um, you know, we wanna compensate hard work. But I think one of the things that, like I said, I wanna go forward in is just making sure that, like I said, once, as Councilmember Spicer said, we've kind of beaten this horse to death, but making sure that, um, we can, we can go on representing what people have voted us here to do. Um, and if the manager can provide, um, the, the... Oh, okay. Um, and if the manager can, and, uh, help us and assist us in, um, you know, turning that policy and vision into reality in the city. So, um, with that, I'm willing to compromise and, uh, support the seven percent with Councilmember Spicer. Attorney Hartman?
So the other thing, and I don't want to extend any, because I know everyone's tired, but the other thing that was brought up, um, in previous meetings and that the council should come, or at least have a discussion about, so that it can be integrated into a future resolution, is whether or not this is just an amendment to the compensation of the current contract, or whether or not you're gonna extend the term of the current contract as well. Because I know that came up.
Yeah, I think my understanding was the resolution we passed, that was amended out of the resolution. So I think we're just dealing with amendment for, for compensation.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so what are we agree, what are we talking about?
Well, we're just, I'm just, we're just discussing right now what that percentage should be, so.
Hundred and five.
There's been, which would be the seven?
It, it's a hundred and five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, then that's what, okay. Because you guys were throwing out different numbers, but that's...
Are you talking about seven percent?
One second, just wanna make sure we...
Seven percent of the current contract, or seven percent of the next year after a study?
Next year.
Well, I think we're basing on this year.
No, no, it was, um, twenty eighteen.
It was on twenty eighteen. That's what Councilwoman Spicer suggested, a hundred and five was the number she suggested. That's the number that Cheryl, Council, City Manager Mitchell suggested. It's the number I suggested.
Councilmember Barnes?
My concern is that this would go back retroactive to the first time that she asked for the raise, because she came to us for the raise and we made some amendments. We put in some language, seven zero, where we would move forward with her. Then we came back with another resolution that we would give her the raise. Can we go back retroactive?
Councilmember Spicer?
I lied. I said it was my last comment. But I thought, I think it has to be effective for this year, correct? We have to have this in place for this current fiscal year, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, thank you.
Attorney Hartman?
So, just so I'm, because I'm ultimately the one with how we're gonna have to draft the, to the contract. Just so I'm clear, what's being indicated is seven percent increase from next year, which would be, the salary would be ninety-eight because of the, the score on the evaluation. Seven percent of ninety-eight takes it to one oh four eight sixty, so just shy of one oh five.
Can we just say one oh five?
You can, but I just, I just wanna be clear that that's what seven is, it's just shy of it.
Councilmember, Councilmember Barnes?
This body can take this back retroactive to the date that she asked for the raise. We can take it back to the day that she requested it, because we drug it out to this point, and we, now we've come to a meeting of the minds, we can go back to the very date, give her the raise starting then, on that aggregate amount.
Councilmember Barnes?
Thank you.
Barnes, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. What, what was that date?
I'm gonna have to pull up paperwork.
September second, well, my anniversary date is September second of each year.
So I just wanna be clear, are you asking for it to be retro to the anniversary date or the date that you asked?
Well, the data that I asked was based on the completion of the evaluation, which was protracted. But it was based on my anniversary date is when it's supposed to be conducted. So if there was any change in the contract, it would be based on the evaluation completion date, which should have been that first week of September. But in the spirit of compromise, if we can settle on a solid number of one oh five, I would be willing to forego it being retroactive, but effective January one of two thousand eighteen.
Thank you.
Councilmember French?
Thanks.
Again, not wishing to extend the meeting too much longer, but it seems that, given what our City Manager just said, would it be possible to change the start date of the contract to match the fiscal year? Such that her contract begins January one and ends on December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. That would then allow us to match her salary and increases along with every other employee that we have that's working on a contract that starts at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, so I'm just, I, I can accept, no, but I'm just saying from a planning of budgets, if we have a start date of September second with a new contract, then it's three months in a current fiscal year that we don't know if it's gonna go up. So as we plan our budgets, we've got three months of a contract of our City Manager that may be adding to our debt.
So, so, like you mentioned, out of concern for time and because we, we identified the compensation, I think we should just do that, and then we can come back with that, so.
I'm just, I'm just, we don't have to make a decision, we're not making a decision, I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility. Remember, we're doing an addendum to a contract. We may not be able to do what I'm suggesting, because that's...
Yeah.
Unless we do an addendum for the date, but we can talk about that at another time.
Okay. So we, there seems to be a consensus for, Madam Clerk, what do we have, what's the number we have? Is it seven still? Or is it one oh five?
The percentage?
Yeah.
One oh five. It's, it's just a flat number, one, one hundred and five thousand, that way then.
Okay.
Because the percentage is getting to...
Okay. Okay. So we'll, we'll have a resolution. Councilmember Reed? Just one second.
Since we're going on this on Monday, I would very much appreciate...
When of order?
Yeah. Yeah, can we, can we just please respect Councilmember Reed right now? Thank you.
I was just saying, since we're gonna be voting on this on Monday, I would appreciate it being wrote out like it's supposed to be voted on, because we beat it up so much until you really don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, could be, could have to be wrote out.
Thank you, can you please? Um, is there any other discussion from council on this agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, we will go to public comment. Persons addressing the council shall limit their comments to three, no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, and please state your name and address.
Lee Louise, nine one seven Luther Drive. I just have one thing to say. Cheryl is compromised for you people again. And you were comparing apples and oranges. You can't compare staff members to a City Manager. That's all I have to say.
Tom Hunzdorfer, eight oh three South Superior Street. Wanted to thank all of you, and thank Amy as well, for a really educational evening, and I appreciate the, the spirit into which all of you have entered into the conversations, both about the City Manager's compensation, but especially about the, the plans for our downtown. And because somehow I am older than I used to be, as I listen, there were acronyms. There's MEDC, and EDC, and DDA, and, and then there's this thing called the land bank, where I wanna go and get a piece of land out of it. So what I would ask of, of Amy and the rest of you, as we go forward with the, the plans for the downtown, is to maybe come up with some fairly simple, vivid graphics that us regular folk out in the community can say, okay, I get what they're trying to do.
So, I, and I, and I'm, I'm breaking the, the thing here, but if you look right there on that podium...
See, senor.
There's a beautiful glossary of terms. That's very helpful.
I, I will, I will, I will, I will try to find that, but, and I know what some of them are. But again, I'm thinking of a, a really simple visual...
Exactly.
Um, that would be great for the community members, because it sounds like you all are getting nearer to when this is really gonna be rolled out to larger audiences, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening in general? Mr. Smith?
God love a democracy. Isn't this something? We all get to participate in this. This is fantastic. I wanna go completely off the board here. As you can tell, I'm with the American Legion here in town. You are lucky enough to have one of the greatest and most active American Legions in the state of Michigan. Today, we started our dispersment for the Toys for Tots drive for this year. We are helping over three hundred and twenty children have Merry Christmas. I thank you, but I want that applause to go to yourselves, because you're the communities that provided the toys for these children. We're merely the conduit. To go completely off the board, on Saturday and following Saturday, you can have all your gifts wrapped at the Albion Library on the second floor for mere donations. So that's something you should all take advantage of. It'll also help the library, I think they're doing it for the Albion Friends League to help cats, if you're a cat person. But it, it's a good cause, and they could sure use your help there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh.
I'm sorry, what time on Saturday?
I wish I could give you that, there should be a flyer downstairs.
Thank you.
Bob Donklin, seven oh seven Huntington Boulevard. Tonight, I wanna congratulate you. Team Albion, you sounded like a team tonight, and I wanna thank you. That, yes, that's your picture.
Yes.
Hazel Law, yes, one two nine three nine two and eight and a half mile road. I'm about to forget that. You guys give me headaches. So the job must be hard for you, but to tell you that you've got a top-notch person. She doesn't have to research everything. She has an ability that's just astronomical. She just comes off, she thinks out of the box. She bothers me, she, because she gets headaches two or three o'clock in the morning, she won't text me. But I was about to give her the raise. I don't know how I was gonna afford it, but she's certainly deserving, and we respect all you're doing. Uh, so if it seems as if we are a little antsy about things, yeah, we were a little antsy, because we don't wanna lose her. She's high quality, and you are doing high-quality jobs as well, so, thank you. And you might need to give a little extra money for all these affairs she attends. She's everywhere, doing everything she can to make Albion better. Thank you.
I'm Sandra Florence at fifteen hundred East Michigan Avenue. And I do want to say, now, council, you've got all weekend to think about this raise for Cheryl. We really don't wanna see you come back and change your minds. We wanna see a hundred and five thousand dollars for her, like she asked. That's what the community is asking. The community does support Cheryl in a predominance of the votes. So I think you'll do a big disservice if you overthink this and come back with something else on Monday night. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Joy Spicer, and I wanted to say that I did want you to go back and think about it. Because you know what, on your jobs, if you were entitled to a raise, and you got it three months later, four months later, or something, so I do want you to think about it. I want you to think about giving her that pay that was due. That wasn't her fault that it was delayed. That was due in Oc, what was it, oh, September, September. So, thank you.
Okay. So one, one, thank you, Clerk Domingo, for Mr. Smith and Mrs. Spicer, can you, before the, when the meeting's over, can you give your address to the clerk?
Two seven nine four nine, uh, Grove.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sheila Lyons Sabasky. I'm at fourteen thirty-three East Michigan Avenue. Uh, this was an exciting meeting. Um, it was wonderful to hear about the ARC and the things that EDC are doing. Uh, it was wonderful to see consensus on the council. It was very exciting. Uh, it is part of the new Albion. Uh, it's exciting when we, gosh, anytime we kinda look around the downtown area and we see the bough, especially I think is a huge symbol of the new Albion. And thinking about it as the new Albion, uh, sort of has a nice refreshing kind of feel. And I think it's exciting, and it's, it's good for perception in our, in our neighborhoods and in our region. I also want to, uh, follow up again with the salary of our City Manager. I think that one oh five thousand dollars is actually a bargain for Albion, given many things. Currently, she is under, undervalued and underpaid at ninety-six thousand dollars. She's an African-American woman, she should be getting paid more than that for the work that she's done, bringing in over one and a half million dollars. And so you guys have gotten a bargain so far, and for the work she's done, it's amazing. And I keep learning more and more about her. I've known that she's had a PhD for quite a while. But what was new to me was her thirty years of experience doing this, you know, sort of work in municipalities. And so that's just, I think, phenomenal. So I think a hundred and five thousand dollars is a bargain for her accomplishments and her experience. And I think it's still on the lower side of the estimates that Councilmember Barnes had provided for us, us, you know, relative to other City Managers who are comparable, comparable sizes. But I don't have the data in front of me to know. So, but anyway, so thank you very much, and I support at least a hundred and five thousand dollars for the Manager's salary. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening? Okay. Councilmember French?
Second?
Moved in, moved in second, all of us in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you.